Good evening, everyone. We came from executive session as we were discussing the employment history of particular individuals, so we're just going to move into our regular meeting this evening, which I always love this meeting. This is where we get to recognize all of the staff and this year, our special board member Evan Schwartz will be leaving us after 11 years and all these other great people in the audience as well. And we thank you all for your service and you'll be recognized as the meeting goes along. At this time, we'll ask Mr. Sisano, should we just roll into that?
Did you want to do that?
Oh, sorry. I apologize. We'd like to take a moment of silence for Mrs. Alice Schatzel, who's a former Howden business teacher who passed away on June 4th. Okay. Thank you. Now, Mr. Sisano. Oh, the mic. How long ago? That one looks like it's pretty long.
Oh, does it?
And we don't need that. No, the one Mrs. Sniffin has?
I guess I was asked to come in and give a quick update on our Algebra II for this year. About a year ago, we made the decision to separate ourselves from the Regents and not offer the Regents exam as a culminating exam in the Algebra II class. Go back to the Algebra II/TRIG curriculum because a lot of the TRIG had been removed from that curriculum, so we did that this year. We revised the curriculum and we did have some students that were chosen, chose to take the Algebra II exam. Originally, I guess back in March or February when we were ordering Regents exams, there were probably about 20 students or so that expressed interest in taking the exam. When we got down to the actual exam, that number actually whittled down to about six, which was what we kind of anticipated would happen if students, you know, got closer to the exam date and then, and saw that, wow, we really did teach a different curriculum than what's going to be on that exam, they opted not, not to take the exam. So, you know, in order for them, for those that didn't take the exam, they can pursue the other options as far as advanced Regents designation by SAT math level two, AP score, there's other pathways that they can. And we're seeing the majority of the students are really looking to go that route.
Great. I think there was, go ahead.
I think for people that don't remember the rationale last year, the rationale was that the, with the change to core curriculum, getting rid of the trigonometry from, from the Algebra II meant that you all felt, you and Mr. Huland felt that students were not adequately prepared for pre-calc and AP calc and that you, my memory, I'm just trying, my memory of the conversation is that you then had to dedicate a fair amount of instructional time to covering the trigonometry that was foundational for pre-calc and calc and that those really were the classes that, that we wanted to make sure our kids were prepared for, which would also then ensure that they are prepared. A kid who's taken pre-calc can go into college and probably place into a calculus exam. A kid who takes AP calc and does well then places out of calc one.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep, your recollection of that is exactly correct. The amount of TRIG that was removed from the curriculum by the state was fairly significant and was put, that put our students at a disadvantage when they went into Intro to Calc where we had to do a lot of work to get them up to the level that they needed to be at to take AP calc or other class, other math classes beyond that. So, you know, looking at that, I think it's definitely the right decision. As I look forward, as we're looking at the next gen, generation math standards, they're not correcting the issue. TRIG is still not a big piece of that, of that curriculum. So, you know, I think we're on the right path. We're seeing, we're seeing more and more schools across Westchester and Putnam County following this lead. And I think it's, I think everybody's seeing the benefits of going back to the old TRIG class we used to do.
And for the students who decided to pursue the Regents exam in addition, was there extra help provided for them or?
Absolutely. We had, we had students come to 10th period, we had students coming to Hart. I worked with a couple of students in Hart that were, that were preparing for it. We did a little bit in SAT prep as well, but I think a lot of the students that were interested in it, they pursued it by basically heart where we have that two-hour time block twice a week and you can get some real dedicated help on that.
Personally, thank you, Mr. Sisano. We've had lengthy conversation. My son happened to be one of those students who was, I'm going to take that Regents. And then at the end of the year, it was like, yeah, no, I'm not going to take that Regents. So, I appreciate, you know, all your help and I think we fared well overall and I appreciate all the efforts that have been put forth. Sure.
So, what I'm about to say is going to involve a little bit of bragging on my part, but it's actually also meant to say something very nice about the math department at Howden. But my son is at Stony Brook, majoring in applied math, has one of the top 10 applied math departments in the country, talks to us a lot about his instructors and he says repeatedly that the best math instructors he's ever had are Mr. Sisano and Mr. Huland and then the rest of his math teachers, but really calling out Mr. Sisano and Mr. Huland, who I think were really advocating this program. And so I think, you know, the board wanted you to talk about this because it was making a change, but I wanted to, to indicate that, that this change was recommended by just, you know, amazing math teachers that we are so lucky to have in the district. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for coming and just reassuring us once again that this was the way to go. Mr. Solomon.
Yeah.
Oh, the mic.
You may need the mic back.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Sorry about that. So, just at the end of every school year, one of the things I have to do is resubmit paperwork for our athletic mergers for the next school year. And so this year, a few weeks ago, I submitted the paperwork to the board and the board kind of has to, you know, talk it over because there are some, you know, big decisions. And I think one of the topics of conversation was our hockey merger. We had a new merger this year and I think, you know, maybe you guys want to know a little bit of how it went and kind of what it's going to be moving forward. So, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Well, I think that, you know, I think those are our questions, like how did it go this year? Were the kids, you know, we had, I think it was like about five kids. Can you talk about their experience this year? Can you talk about how much it costs the district? Can you talk about what you expect next year in terms of kids on the team and what the cost is expected to be?
Sure. So, this year, we actually had three student athletes participate in the hockey merger. The merger in the past before this year was only with two school districts, Hendrick Hudson and Howden. This year, because both schools couldn't field the team by themselves, we kind of branched out. So, this year's merger was with Walter Panis, Lakeland, Putnam Valley, Hendrick Hudson, and Howden. So, five-school merger, some schools are A schools, larger schools, and then smaller Bs like Putnam Valley and then a C like ourselves. Added to three boys that played, two were starters, two out of three were also seniors. So, moving forward, we have one boy who will be a senior next year and I think one or two others that may be interested. Sometimes, you know, kids change their minds, so hockey season isn't until November, so I anticipate two or three again next year. The cost this year was about $699 per player, so we were billed $2,097. If the board remembers, last year I did a cost analysis for every single sport. So, just looking at that data from last year, which I have right here and I'd be more than welcome to pass it around, hockey would be the sixth most expensive sport out of our 15 varsity sports. So, it's kind of in the middle. You know, some of them range from mid-900s to high-300s. So, obviously, you know, the amount of coaches, the new uniforms, chaperones, the travel, each sport kind of has different variables on why the prices are different, but that's kind of where we're at right now. I do anticipate it being similar. A lot of kids did graduate from the multiple schools, but some of them have younger programs and on the modified level and those kids will be joining the varsity merger next year. So, I'd assume the cost would be pretty similar next year moving forward.
Isn't there also a cost to the families? I know that Howden pays, you're saying 20, $2,975?
$2,097.
$2,097.
Correct.
But does the family, do the families also pay to play?
So, each school district kind of operates differently. This year, I was actually just asking one of the hockey families, they were not asked for any donations or anything like that. So, this year, Walter Panis and Lakeland, they were the host school where in the past Hendrick Hudson was. And in the past, they would ask for donations to help with the ice hockey cost, but to my knowledge and to the parents' knowledge, there was no additional cost this year.
But we also don't provide transportation. Parents provide the transportation.
For all of our mergers, we don't provide transportation with the exception of some of our mergers with Garrison, and that's really because at the modified level, it's hard for kids to, you know, get to different schools in different communities and they're right down the road. So, that's the only school where we do have an exception with the transportation for mergers.
Why did I think it was so much more for hockey last year? Like if it's right there in the middle, why were, why did we even discuss this?
So, two years ago, it was a different merger. Two years ago, it was only us and Hendrick Hudson and there were less players on the team. This year, between the five schools, the roster was a little higher, so the cost per kid actually went down a little bit. So, it kind of helped us out. But like I said, every school kind of operates differently, so Lakeland and Panis may have had more money budgeted than Hendrick Hudson did for hockey. So, it kind of helped us out this year. And that same five-school merger is what we were proposing for next year as well. So, I do think the cost will be pretty comparable.
So, is this going to be the same thing going forward that we have to just look at it every single year?
So, every merger, I have to resubmit every year. They're one-year agreements with other districts. So, whether it be hockey or indoor track or wrestling, some of the sports that we, you know, merge with other schools with, you guys will always get them towards the end of the year because I like to submit the paperwork for everything before school starts in the fall.
But hockey is the one that the price could be significantly different year to year.
Hockey can vary, correct, based on the amount of kids and the amount of schools that we merge with.
Because the other mergers don't have a financial implication, they're just mergers for participation levels, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So, hockey is, we pull out hockey not to single it out because it's, it's a financial singling out.
Right. But, right, but this year, it's right in the middle, so it's, it really doesn't need to be singled out.
Right now, no, it's kind of middle of the pack, like I said. Like I said, I could resend this to you if you guys want to just pass it around, but it's right in the middle, so.
I think the other question you all had was the level of play, how much playing time? And I said personally, I go to these and I see our players are getting the opportunity to play and I see the Percicello's in the audience here and there's some, Thomas has been playing since forever and he's going to be a senior. So, I've seen our students getting playing time.
No, I don't actually think that question was playing time. The question, because that's, that I actually think is personally irrelevant. The issue was participation, right? So, if the district was paying this money that at least in the first year was more than we typically paid per student, per sport, even though we don't really want to get into thinking a lot about per student, per sport because we think all the sports are important, but because it was a bit of an outlier, participation, I think, was the question because we wanted to make sure if we had made this commitment that, that it was something that kids, that there was uptake for the opportunity.
Sure. And I know from coming to games this year, all three of our boys were very committed. The one returning boy will be a senior, he's a starter, he's at almost every game, if not every game. So, I believe the commitment will be there next year as well.
Not to contradict you, but just to make sure that we were like, only if our kids play, or something like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel like you answered our questions.
Yes. That was the main, that was the big question because you brought up the point of that a lot of these kids are on travel teams. So, there's a lot of, there might be two, two games at one, at one time. So, we wanted to just make sure that the kids were coming to the game, not necessarily playing or how much time, but that they were at least showing up at the games.
Yeah, I think for the Howden athletes, at least this year, they were committed, they were at the games. Like I said, two out of three were starters, the other one was a rotational player. That was their priority as opposed to the travel team. And I think for Thomas, next year, it would be similar where the merged high school team would be the priority.
That's nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good summer.
Okay. Are we moving? Is that working?
Are we ready?
Oh, she needs the microphone. Is that video working now?
Director, shut off. Find out.
No. Not yet. So, I'll give a little bit of a-
Mr. Sisano, sorry. And if you want to leave, we will not be offended.
You have a busy day tomorrow.
But you can stay as well. We know the workload you have, Mr. Sisano, ahead of you.
Okay, just a short introduction and what we're going to be seeing now. Originally, Daniel Pack McCarthy was going to be joining us tonight to talk about her new role in the community and she wasn't able to. And we decided in the spot that she was going to take, we wanted to show you a video that was created by some of our high school students. And it is a video that kind, they gave us an indication of where they think we are, where we are with Howden. And this is their assessment of our district at this point and what we've been doing and what they want to continue to see us do. We have the Howden Almanac that will be going out to families, probably early part of the summer, that just highlights what's going on within the district throughout the year. And we've embedded this video in my letter into the Howden Almanac, so you're not just hearing from me or from us, what we think is happening, but you're also hearing from the kids. So, I thought it was a perfect time to show this video and hear from our students, so.
The purpose of school, I mean, that's a very philosophical question. I think we want to prepare children, young men and young women, to be part of our society, to be, to be the leaders that we're going to need in the future, but also for the, all the other roles we need in our society as well.
The purpose of school is to ensure that students figure out themselves, their strengths, what they enjoy, to then carry them through their lives with that strong foundational skills.
That's a big question. The overall and underlying purpose of school is so much more than just the content, especially now. You know, it could be argued that, you know, 50 years ago, the underlying and, and, you know, main purpose of school was the content because where else would young people access the content if not through their instructors? But the fact of the matter is that in today's day and age, anything that's content related can be Googled. So, I think that what's changing is the overall and underlying purpose of school is not to, for teachers to convey content, but for teachers to convey the skills that are necessary to access content. And by that, I mean collaboration, critical thinking, communication, and creativity.
Noah and I were looking for a project to do to finish out our year in DCI. We began asking each other questions about school and these questions evolved into our new project. We start to ask around the school to analyze the differences between the perspectives of school. We began to analyze the differences between why people enjoy school more than others.
One thing I think Howden does well is seeing as it's a small community, everyone gets to like connect with someone else. So, no matter what friend group you're part of, you could always talk to someone because whether you know someone, your friend knows someone, everyone's really connected.
They offer a good amount of like in-depth courses and like challenging courses that cause students to have like actually work hard to get good grades as opposed to just handing out free hundreds.
We have a lot of clubs, so people have opportunities to do stuff besides class.
You get to know your teachers very well because the class sizes are genuinely much smaller than at other schools. And so, you really can get to know your teachers and you get to just interact with them and sometimes even sort of customize how you want to learn through that.
I want to like have a future, end of life. I don't really want to work at a gas station, so I think better grades will help me succeed in life.
To make money when I'm older.
To do well in school. Get to a good college.
No, honestly, because-
Also to learn, like I don't want to be stupid.
Yeah. I don't want to, I don't want to be one of those people who looks back at high school and was like, wow, I could have done better.
Well, I want to do well in school because it would help me get into a better college which would look more appealing when I apply for jobs and stuff.
Because I want to be successful and to make money in the future.
You need the tests to get them to do the memorization because you need some memorization in any class. But at the same time, you need PBL so students are motivated to learn and are excited to express what they know, which is not at all able to be done on a test.
There is very little in the way of that you can be creative at school, do your own thing. All school is right now is that you go to school 7:30 in the morning, you take a bunch of classes, you get a bunch of homework, and there's really no time for you to do what you actually want if you have a passion.
I would say, just like say now, like watching the teachers like lecture us on the lesson on have like activities or whatever, instead of just copying and copying.
I think using technology is also really good because like our world is so technology-based now that not using it like wouldn't be helpful for anyone. So, using technology like in more classroom environments is definitely a good way to go.
Also, another benefit with PBL, since there's no real grade, you can always try to do better. On a test, once you get a 100, it's over. With PBL, you can always say, oh, I could have spoken better on this presentation, I could have made this video a little bit better, I could have made this clip better. So, you're always, always wanting to improve. It's just always about self-improvement.
Taking a test and getting a grade is not necessarily the best way to measure how smart a person is. Like some people just aren't good test takers.
Being taught to like get a five on the AP, which like probably will benefit us in May, but like it's hard for you to tell if like you want a career in stats or like if you're interested in that just because you're not actually like learning what a real statistician would do and like you're basically just like learning how to take a test at the end, which like isn't really like critical.
Yeah, it's-
I also think it's important to like learn by example and it's hard to just be taught something and then expected to repeat it without seeing how it can be applied to multiple problems.
Being in a quieter setting, but doing like small group work or individual work.
Kids can like kind of design their own educational experience. So, even if, so, but teachers are kind of guiding you so you're not just like learning useful things, but like I feel like what I want to do when I leave high school is not really catering to in high, in the high school environment now.
Here at Howden, we try to incorporate current events with past issues that either the world or the United States have gone through to try to engage students, to get them critically thinking about world problems, how people solve them in the past, and how we can solve problems of today.
And we take our jobs very seriously here at Howden.
Truly, truly appreciate understanding the why all the time, why do we need to know this, why do we need to know this? And I need to be prepared to answer those questions in an interesting fashion to get them engaged, but also educational perspective so that I'm not just kind of throwing examples that don't make all that much sense just for the purpose to get them engaged. It also needs to be a really good reality.
And here at Howden, I think it's really important that kids have choice and I think that the learning is relevant to their own lives, that it connects to somebody.
We try and get you guys to think critically so you can solve world issues.
The content to me is, is fun and I love it, obviously, but, you know, that's stuff they could seek out with any, any smartphone or any computer or any textbook. It's more important for me to see them buy in and enjoy the experience and hopefully that will lead to greater experiences. To spark a passion in learning, to try to facilitate lifelong learning in all students because learning happens outside of school more often than actually probably does inside of school.
So, in my classroom, I would say that the way that I spark passion for learning in my students is making things very student-centered, giving students a lot of choice in the projects that we do and the things that they want to research, allowing kids to have the liberty to choose kind of what they, what drives them and what they want to find out more about. So, like even if we have to teach a certain piece of content, allowing the kids to take it in the direction that they want to based on their desires and their interests.
I also think they need to be, to have a strong understanding of themselves. They have to understand, you know, that interpersonal relationship with themselves and being comfortable with what they don't know and being comfortable to ask the questions and to say, let me get back to you, I can figure, I can figure this out.
So, as a teacher, do you find that students are more receptive to authentic learning or more traditional learning?
Definitely authentic learning, of course. More hands-on, the better, working in groups. I think the children get more out of it and they're excited, whatever the topic that we're working on.
After numerous interviews and conversations with students and teachers, we have come to the following realizations about the state of education at Howden.
Through our interviews, we found that Howden has a great environment for students to really connect with each other and feel welcome.
We also discovered that teachers who have a passion for learning new topics beyond the curriculum are able to let students take ownership of their learning by being flexible and are not afraid to not know the answer, make it so that students have a more beneficial learning environment.
Classes need to change to a more purposeful learning in order to adapt to the new needs of the students in our current education system. We feel the solution to all of these problems is the implication of authentic learning.
But there are many misconceptions with authentic learning. One of the biggest misconceptions is that it cuts out the aspects of traditional school that provides students with a curriculum. In reality, this curriculum is used to teach the students and also scaffold the learning to provide an authentic outcome instead of that of a test or a quiz.
So, what exactly is authentic learning? The process of traditional school was to take in information and give all that information back on a test at the end of the unit. But now, technology allows us to access any content in a matter of seconds with all our smart devices. The role of school needs to shift to teaching students how to use content to solve world problems, create, innovate, and apply all the information they learn. So, how does authentic learning work? Authentic learning starts with a question, task, or problem for a class to tackle as a whole. Through this type of learning, it allows students to learn content and collaborate with others in order to produce an authentic outcome. This system of learning is based on problem-solving, asking questions, and thinking deeply about subjects. With this style of learning, students are able to get experiences that they will have in the real world. Students can now learn by doing and not just by listening and giving back.
If you agree that schooling needs to adapt to the 21st century world, voice your opinion and keep our conversation alive by attending Board of Ed meetings, talking with your parents, teachers, and other students, expressing your views on social media, and sharing our message and this video with as many people-
So how does authentic learning work? Authentic learning starts with a question, task, or problem for a class to tackle as a whole. Through this type of learning, it allows students to learn content and collaborate with others in order to produce an authentic outcome. This system of learning is based on problem-solving, asking questions, and thinking deeply about subjects. With this style of learning, students are able to get experiences that they will have in the real world. Students can now learn by doing and not just by listening and giving back.
If you agree that schooling needs to adapt to the 21st century world, voice your opinion and keep our conversation alive by attending board of ed meetings, talking with your parents, teachers, and other students, expressing your views on social media, and sharing our message and this video with as many people as you can. Thank you for your support and please keep the conversation alive.
So congratulations go out to Luke Hammond and Noah Bingham, um who spent the last two to three months interviewing people. Interviewing people, um learning a little bit about what others thought and putting it into this, um what I thought was a terrific video that kind of shows where we are and hopefully where we want to go. Thank you.
I think that video is really fitting for Dr. Bowers' last board meeting.
So you're stealing my thunder. Sorry.
No, go ahead, you can continue. I was going to say this certainly leads to the work and dedication that you've provided in your years here and, and all of these steering us, the ship into the direction of taking that step, taking that chance to try something different and for that, we thank you.
Thank you, it was very heartening.
You just didn't see those kinds of projects to the same level. I mean, just, you know, you think about like Discovery Day or, you know, in the past where they've been the bigger nighttime events. I mean, the, the scope at which these things were happening was really exciting. And to me, one of the things that's really nice about the video was like in the first year, students would come in and, and I think it is hard, it's a challenge, it's a shift, you know, it's, 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 I mean, nothing always goes well, but I mean, I think it was, you know, I think it was, it was a shift and, and change is hard. And I think this, the, the, the scope at which it's now being implemented just really shows. Like, I mean, I was, I was really, I was really moved, you know, to have that happen tonight. Okay, shall we um move into the farewells?
Sure. I think that's the right time. Okay, so we have um a number of people we'd like to, to thank tonight for their many, many years of service to Haldane, whether it's a board member, a teacher, a teaching assistant, a director of building and grounds. This truly is, and I think that this kind of shows that this is, it takes a village to take our students and grow them and develop them into um some of the awesome young adults that we saw go across the stage last Saturday. And you know, I, I was just, I was, when you watch our graduations and comparing um many, many graduations that I've been to, we have young adults that are well-behaved, respectful, are appreciative of everything that's done, and it shows. And um I don't, for those of you who have, were at graduation, I, I mean, I, I tell you that, that speeches from our students, um the only thing I could do is make sure I had a tissue handy after them because they were just so moving. And you know, we're seeing the, the capabilities of our students, they feel that like they can do anything that they want. And I think probably the most productive thing, and I heard it even in the speeches, is our students realizing that mistakes are okay. It's part of the learning process. You don't have to be perfect and if you want to push the envelope, you have to expect mistakes to be made. So all of this is a thank you for, for everybody who is here that has served and we want to say goodbye. So David, we have a couple of staff members here that are from your um school, so I think David is going to be sharing a, a thank you and a farewell to some of my colleagues who will be moving on and going out off in the sunset with me, so.
So, so we have two people here from the elementary school who will, who are on the board agenda as honorees for their retirement. Obviously, I've only been around this place for just about a year now, so I don't know the complete history of these people and, and all the wonderful things that they've done, but I certainly know the wonderful things that they're doing right now. Sherri Cochran is, is one of our retirees and she has a very, very challenging job right now. She works in kindergarten all day long. So when you think of the needs of our students, you know, those high school students that walked across the stage were very self-sufficient, they didn't need anyone to tie their shoes or anything like that. Obviously, in kindergarten, we have some amazing physical needs and, and emotional needs as, as we're adjusting to school. I'm in our kindergarten classrooms just about every day. I mean, I try to get to every class every day, but I really make a point of getting to see our kindergartners. They're fun to see, so it's, it's, I always get there. And I see Sherri working with Sylvia Lamont every day and great things are happening there. So unfortunately, it all ends in a few days. We wish Sherri well and hope she has a great time in her retirement and that she comes back and visits us if she wants to because she's always welcome. But thank you for all your service to our school district and, and to our students especially. So congratulations on your upcoming retirement. Our other person who's, who's going to be honored tonight is, is Cindy Gannon. And it's a little awkward saying goodbye to Cindy because she's not really leaving, at least yet, she's got a few more months to go with us. In, in six months from now, Cindy will really be going, but right now, since we do this honor, this celebration once a year, tonight's the night that we're going to be saying goodbye to Cindy, even though we come back after the summer, she'll still be with us. Cindy also does a great job in our building. This year, she is spending most of her time in our library. Our library has thousands of books that must be maintained properly on the shelves, which child has which book, make sure everything's exactly where it is so when the kids need it, they can find it, um helping out Mrs. Lawellin, who was our teaching assistant in there. So that is the majority of, of Cindy's day and, and it's a very, very important job. Um, I know in the past Cindy's worked in, in the health office and she did that, I believe, most of last year, is that correct? For 15 years, see that? As I said, I don't know all the history. But obviously, that's a very important job too. Um, our health office is a K through 12 health office, so we have students coming in with all sorts of medical ailments, you know, from young children with, with invisible boo-boos to older children who have other things that maybe are, are a little more serious and, and obviously always taken care of well by the nurse in there. And when Cindy was in there as an aide, supporting that nurse, obviously, I'm sure great things happened there as well. Cindy has purchased a new home, I'm sure she's going to be enjoying in her retirement, that happens in a few months from now, so.
Where is it?
So just a little, a little bit further north of here. So we get to still see Cindy till December, but then after that, she will be as well enjoying her well-deserved retirement. We will miss her, we wish her the best and, and thank her for, again, for all her years of service to, to our district and to our students. So congratulations, Cindy.
So I have just a little anecdote that I, I want to share on what David was saying about um working in a kindergarten classroom and the energy that it, that you have to expend. Years ago, when I was an elementary principal, we had a, a dessert contest, a bake-off, so to speak. And um I gave the choice of either doing the person's job for a day or they could have my parking spot for a month for the winner. So one of my kindergarten teachers won and she chose switching jobs with me and I taught kindergarten for one day. And I went home that night, I walked in, I said to my husband, I need to go to sleep. And I went right upstairs, it was 6:30 and I can tell you, I have such respect for what the elementary teachers, the teaching assistants, the aides, they do on a regular basis because it utilizes an enormous amount of energy. So he wasn't kidding when he was saying that. And no, no wonder you two look so young and vivacious and all the other thing. Okay, um the next retiree I'm choosing to do because um he was our knight in shining armor this year. Gary Vanasolt um joined us many, many years ago as a maintenance person, but this year we actually asked him, cajoled him, um I don't even know what other words to use, begged him, um to help us out as the director of building and grounds. And um we had um our director left last year, kind of at towards the end of the year, and Gary was willing to step into the position. And I was very happy that you were willing to do so because I knew you understood everything. You understood the school, you understood what we needed to do, you understood the faculty, the students, the kids, um the, the sports, the, um, you know, everybody. And I think that that really helped because you were able to step into it with almost no preparation, you just knew. And so not only have you served as a maintenance person, you've served as the coach, you've served as um an administrator, helping us work through the year, and we ended the year in a very positive way. I also want to say thank you because I think I got to know you better and vice versa and I really appreciate everything that you were able to do for the district. And um I'm very happy that you chose to do that. And so as you um look forward to your retirement, know that you made an impact all through, but especially you kept the ship a sail and moving forward and we thank you very much for doing that.
I also have an anecdote. First of all, congratulations. Congratulations, May. Good luck in your future, alright? We are here because of May and all the children, alright? I was uh channel surfing the other day and I happened upon a National Geographic show and it was like, it's a documentary, black and white, 1965, the outward, outward bound women of the Minnesota woods. And I'm watching the show and it's about 24 women in 1965 now, think about what they were doing, right? They were finding their self-worth because it was a man-oriented world, world back then. They go through the whole show and the storyline at the end of the show was, life tells a story. And this is, life is a story. This is life, alright? We can't normalize what we do, alright, on a daily basis, from educators to support staff, to board members, to everybody on this planet that works with children. Never ever normalize what you do. It's a special thing to step up and educate the children, make sure they're in a safe and health environment, alright? And please don't ever shortchange what we do, it's really important. And uh, you know, talk with Dr. Bowers and we sit down with a prospective bus driver and there's no such thing as a B or C uh type of day. You always have to be on your A game when you're doing this because, you know, we have a lot of responsibility. And can't, I can't thank my, my wife for my support and you guys, thank you because it's been special, alright? Thank you much.
Thank you.
And good luck to the school.
And I also have to thank Bonnie. We spoke a number of times in the early morning. So as, at 4:30, when we were trying to figure out what we were going to do for the day, there were times that Gary was already out and about and he was trying to figure out if the roads were passable. And so Bonnie and I would have a conversation, you know, before the sun rose, so um thank you Bonnie for your support with that.
This question looks like in real life.
And I always like to remind Gary how many years uh he's been here. I've been gone quite a few years and Gary was here then. Thank you for all your service.
And I think that there may be other people that want to um share other thoughts, but I would like to share my deep appreciation for the work Evan has done. And it has been um a pleasure working with you, um not that to discount anybody who ever has sat on the board, it's hard work, but I do think there's um a special understanding when you're a fellow educator. And you deal with all of it on a day-to-day basis, so you understand um what happens, you know, boots on the ground, you understand what happens with administrators, and certainly you understand the board perspective. So you were very helpful and many times I just would sit and listen and hear your perspective and I appreciated it each time, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And last but certainly not least...
Oh, wait, 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 we want our opportunity to talk about Evan. Sorry. No, no, no problem. Evan, I want to thank you um for all your wisdom. I've been on the board just about three years and uh your wisdom from being on the board for the past 11 definitely has shown and I think, the thing I'll miss most is your great sense of humor and thank you for keeping it light.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, so the first, um, the first time I met Evan was when I was considering running for the board and I showed up at a board meeting for the first time. And for anybody who's come to their first board meeting, they know that that's kind of a harrowing experience, it's like very overwhelming. Um, I knew nobody that was really there and um I, after, I had said that I was going to run for the board and after the meeting, Evan approached me and he said, thank you for uh being willing to run for the board and let me know if you need anything, I'm here to help. And I felt so welcomed, um and I was so appreciative of that moment and since then, I've seen him share that same interaction with so many other people. So I really appreciate that and you've always been somebody I felt like I could call if I had a question and I certainly have called and you've always been there and I really, I appreciate that. I feel like you've, you've really been a part of my board experience, a positive one.
Thank you.
Um, and the other thing I want to say is that sometimes on a board, you know, we start to fall into categories like, oh, that's the numbers person, that's the sports person, that's the elementary school person. And the ideal board, in my opinion, is this balanced board, right? Where there's not, we, we all have differing perspectives and differing points of view and that's what makes um a great board because we're really representing a community. And for me to kind of um second what Laura said, uh your perspective has always been so objective and I just really appreciate that. Every single comment, thought, anything that you would share was never laced with like a personal agenda or a personal perspective, it was always so objective. And uh that's really valuable, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
It's a little token of our appreciation on behalf of the board.
Thank you.
And you know, you're going to laugh when you open that one.
Oh, yeah.
And you didn't come with a coffee cup tonight.
You know what? I'll tell you the honest truth, it's sitting in my car, I forgot to bring it up while I put my bag.
Every, every meeting, he comes with his dogged on us, we think, how late is he going to be drinking coffee? Every meeting.
So thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say it's just been an honor to be on, on the board, working with so many people. This board has been amazing. People need to know that this is the most dedicated board out there, we work so hard and I'm actually meeting with this new superintendent coming in tomorrow and, and my advice to him will be, not advice, but my comment to him will be that um even when they disagree with you, you know, it's with a smile and it's all about, as Gary said, it's all about the kids. And at the end of the day, that's the only agenda that this board has since, and since I've, this board and every board that I've been on, the only agenda has been about what's best for the kids and for the school. And that's probably what people say, I can't believe you've been on the board for 11 years, is because I, it's not as, we, it's not a screaming board, it's all about the kids and it's just, it's just a privilege to be here. I'm, I'm excited for, for the new direction that the, the school is going in. I was here when Dr. Valenti got here and he took it to a whole direction, Dr. Bowers, she took it to a whole nother level uh with everything we saw in the video. And now um I feel good that we're leaving it uh in a whole nother direction. I'll be following the board, I have two kids that graduated, obviously, um but obviously when you live in Cold Spring, you never get away from Haldane, so. So I will be following.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Those congrats. Okay, now.
So um I just want to thank you, it was great to have a student perspective on the board this year. And I thought you were so very mature and um a deep thinker and you had insight that we wouldn't have without you sitting on the board. Um, I hope you learned something and you know, the whole process of all of this is so everybody can learn and make something better. I can't wait to see where you go in life, I think it's just going to be awesome. You have capabilities of doing anything and everything that you want to do. You have capabilities of doing anything and everything that you want to do. And I really, I want to say thank you wholeheartedly for just being a great student, for being a great member on the Board, and also just for being a great kid. And so congratulations on your graduation. And we're impressed that you're here after that you have graduated.
Thank you. I kind of pushed that issue. I said, "You have to come, May, one last time." May, I just want to add as well, we really, as an entire Board, appreciated your opinion. And Peggy and I had that opportunity to see you speak and really came out shining. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just say one thing to May, because I remember May when she was like one or two in Todd Park, right? So best of luck. I know you're going into politics, and, you know, if you go down and look at any politician or anyone in government, and look at their resume, and it'll always, a lot of times it'll start with local government, right? And they're like 21, like when they were young. And you've got a way ahead, right? 17, you started doing it. So you're already ahead of the game. So, you know, take this, you know, School Board experience and use it as your springboard. So, good luck.
Thanks. Good luck.
Okay, so I just want to mention a few other people who are retiring and wish them well. Mrs. Pat Bajarski will be retiring. Anthony Banderas, who's a bus driver here. Mr. Tim Bowers, who's a cleaner and a bus driver. Ron Reynolds, who's a cleaner. And Eileen Anderson, who is one of our teacher aides. So best of luck to all of them.
Thank you. And last, but not certainly least, Dr. Bowers. As we just saw and witnessed your great work, you've really set the bar. Change isn't always easy, but I think we're heading in the right direction. And I look forward to the many years ahead for the groundwork that you've begun here at Haldeen. And appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And enjoy retirement, especially those two lovely grandchildren of yours.
Certainly will.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Come. Okay, go ahead.
It wasn't until I got on the Board, I mean, it's sort of because I work as an education researcher, I had an idea about like how big a Superintendent's job was. But it wasn't until I got on the Board that I realized that a Superintendent's job is massive. It is so, it's so huge because there's everything from being concerned about the emotional and, you know, physical well-being of children, like really fundamental things, through, you know, really supporting their, their intellectual blossoming, right? Which I think the District's really made great. I really think the District's made such great strides in, in the past few years to then this the most miserable, mundane stuff behind the scenes that nobody ever sees. Like, no one will ever, and I've said this at other Board meetings, but no one will ever know the efficiencies and care with, and I don't want to give it all to Dr. Bowers, but, but the important changes that Dr. Bowers made that really, really, I think, tightened the ship in really, in so many ways. I mean, I am, I am speechless. I don't know how anybody does your, your job. And so I really, I, I know, I think of all the times when there's like this cost-saving or this efficiency, there's those little things as well as the other things, and how much you really care for the kids. Like, you know, I know I've gotten to see the deep well of compassion and care that drives you for students. And that, for the first time I met you, that's what you said, just like, well, my number one thing is always going to be what's best for the students. And there was like no dilly-dallying around. And I, I, I really do think we've, we've seen that, and I, I'm, I'm very appreciative. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we're going to take a little break so we can go out and enjoy some refreshments. So please join us in the cafeteria. Okay, we're back. That was a nice, lovely little reception. And Dr. Bowers, would you like to move into your Superintendent's report?
Sure. So actually, for the first one, James Pond Proceeds, I'm going to be handing it over to Ann, who's going to give you kind of an update of where we are.
Yeah, just a little update, because I know that at some point, somebody's going to say, "Whatever happened to that money that we got from James Pond?" So it's going to be used this summer, so I just wanted to, it's an FYI. If you recall that when the turf field was approved by the voters, the plan included the use of the money received from the sale of the land. So the land was sold in June of 2017, and the funds were placed in a reserve that's specifically for land sale proceeds. So if you recall, we've been renewing a bond anticipation note every year for the turf field borrowing. We've been paying down a little bit each year, and now that ban is currently at $950,000. The ban is now five years old, and that's the limit for a ban. We're going to issue bonds this summer, but we're going to use the $415,000 to pay down the outstanding $950,000 ban, and we're going to issue bonds in the amount of $535,000. This was all approved back when the turf field was, was voted upon. But I just want to let you know, I'm actually going to take those funds and pay down the bands with it, so the money will be spent. We will receive building aid for the project through 2031. The bonds will be structured to match the schedule, and will be paid off in August of 2030. So that we're going to have that inflow of state aid to turn around and pay the bond principal and interest each year, which was the original plan. So that's happening as planned way back in 2012 when the, the field was, was installed. So just to let you know that that's finally, after all of these years, coming to an end.
May I ask a field question? And it might not be, I'm just thinking of it right this moment, so it might be something that you tell me, let me get back to you. But I'll just throw it out there. When the field was originally put in, in 2012, we talked about having a 10-year lifespan with it before we might have to repair it or replace it.
For the carpet replacement.
For the turf, the carpet of the turf, the turf, I guess. And we talked about having like a savings account that we would be putting money in annually so that when 10 years came and we needed to replace the turf, we had the money to do so.
Yes.
Has that been happening? And if so, I feel like it hasn't been happening. I feel like we said we don't have the extra money to put away. I'm just kind of asking for an update or a reminder about what happened with that.
The plan was that, over the years, when we had use of the field and we charged rental fees for it, that we would put that into the savings account. That is the time that we established the repair reserve. But over the past few years, because we've had some excess fund balance that the Board chose to put into the repair reserve, our repair reserve is quite healthy. We're using $200,000 of it to repair the restrooms. And even after we use that, you're still going to have $400,000 in the repair reserve. So the intent, the original intent of that repair reserve was to save for carpet replacement or turf replacement. You have that money already. So as you use repair reserve funds, keep in the back of your mind, and I will certainly remind you, save some money for the turf field. Right now, it's covered.
Right. Thank you for that reminder. And do we know how much we're, we're putting aside for that?
In my estimate, it would expect to be about $125,000.
Okay.
At this time. But we've been really doing a nice job, not me personally, but the staff has been doing a really nice job of maintaining it. We have a special piece of equipment that we got that we use just strictly for that. What it does is it gathers the crumbs that get dispersed when the field is used. We bring it back. That keeps the turf from getting too smashed down and worn out too fast. So maintaining it is really key in the lifespan of the turf.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
So just some kind of closing reminders or just kind of figuring out where we are in certain things that we've been talking about through the year. The elementary school bathroom renovations, and we have, we brought that to the Building and Grounds, and also to, our architect came and spoke about it. We were talking about releasing some of the funds to allow us to renovate our two elementary school bathrooms. We're about to submit the plans to State Ed, and Laura will be signing them tonight so they can go up to State Ed, so that process. Now we're just waiting for State Ed to step in and give us the approval. So that's where we are with that. Monolith Solar. You've been hearing about the concerns that we've had with Monolith. As you remember, the solar panels that are on this building, we had a situation where one of the DC connectors that held the panels together caught on fire. And because of that, we shut the series down. And we looked at some of the other DC connectors, and they were well on their way of, of having the same type of meltdown as the first one did. So it hasn't been online since that day, which was quite a while ago. And so Monolith has not been responsive. They are ready to replace the DC connectors, but they, their attorney has not worked with our attorney well, and we just have to figure out where they are. They actually tried to come about a month ago, was it? When they came? They just, they wanted, they just wanted to show up and put the DC connectors on the roof. And we said, that's, you can't do that. There are a number of things that have to happen before we're allowing you access, certainly not during the school day. And we have to have insurance and assurances that we're not going to have the same type of situation. So, long story short, our attorney has contacted their attorney. We are about to go into what's called commercial arbitration if the Board approves it. The last letter was sent on June 1st. 30 days from then, you can make a decision as to what you plan on doing. At the reorg meeting on the 2nd of July, our attorney will either be with us by phone or in person. And you will be making the decision if you want to go to arbitration at that point. And that's where they, as per the contract with Monolith, that's, that's a clause that allows us to make sure that we have, they are doing what they need to do, and they are meeting our requirements. So that's where we are with Monolith. A reminder with June calendar changes, I'm not sure.
We're almost there.
Yeah, we are. There's a number of things that I think haven't happened yet, but we have the Moving Up Ceremony today for the 8th grade, and tonight is the 8th Grade Dance. On Wednesday, June 20th, Thursday, June 21st, and Friday, June 22nd, the middle school, grades 6 and 7, will be dismissed early at 1:15, and elementary students will be dismissed on all three days at 1:55. Last day of school for students will now be Friday, the 22nd, instead of Thursday, the 21st because of all the snow days. The 5th Grade Moving Up Ceremony is on Wednesday, the 20th, which is tomorrow, will be held at 2:30 instead of noon because of the later dismissal. And high, high school students should consult the final exam schedule, and the Regents Week is about to end. So they've been busy with their, their finals and the Regents. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, our public has dwindled, but is there any communication from public at this point? No? Okay.
Oh, you know what I didn't do? I'm sorry.
Oh, Bosie's.
Yep, because it wasn't listed here. Just to kind of give you some information, and it's more of FYI now than it is anything else at this point. But the way that component districts in a Bosie's, the way that we support the administrative budget is that the, the component districts, there's a decision made about how the entire pie is divided up. And there are two ways for the pie to be divided up. One is ARWADA, which is the Regional Average Weighted Daily Attendance, which is basically, each school district is assigned a certain number of kids. And it gets kind of complicated because the high school students are, they're greater than one because the cost for high school is greater than it is for elementary. So it might be like 1.2 for each high school student and 1.0 for the elementary and the middle. So districts normally are, they divide the pie up by ARWADA. And the other option is that they can divide the pie up by true value method, which is the wealthier districts pay more, and the ones that aren't as wealthy will pay less of a percentage. And it doesn't, it's, you know, the size obviously is part of that, but if, if you have, if it's by the wealth factor, if your wealth factor is greater, you would pay a little bit bigger part of the puzzle. So about a decade ago, Bedford School District had a very high true value number, and they were paying, they felt they were paying more than they were supposed to. And so they wrote a letter to many different people. They actually asked at one point if they could switch to a different Bosie so it wasn't, so they weren't paying that greatest percentage. And as the result of, of the discussions, they changed the way that the pie is divided up in Putnam Northern Westchester Bosie's. So it's half by ARWADA and half by true value. So Bedford will pay less because their ARWADA is considered into it, and it's just not true value. And it kind of shifts into all the different areas. So why I'm telling you this is because there has been, they have resurrected the question. Bedford has resurrected the question, and I know that they have been in touch with Bosie's, and there's been conversations. And at the last Superintendent's meeting, they explained that their, the question is being called again. So districts would realize that they would like to go to pure ARWADA. And I gave you some information in the, in the Friday memo that showed you what would happen to districts' allocation of the funds. And for us, it's not a huge difference, but there is a difference. We'd be paying a little bit more. And I know that the Superintendent in Bedford is really learning a lot about the process, and the conversations are being had with their Board of Education. But I just wanted to put that on your radar because we don't know where it's going.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
Yep.
Moving on to Consent Agenda Minutes. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
The Committee Minutes from the Technology Committee, as well as the Buildings and Grounds Committee, are there for everyone to view.
I have a question about it. There's a, the last comment in the B&amp;G Minutes, they have potential date to review the findings over the summer would be at the Board meeting on August 16th. And I thought that that was going to be kind of like a brief before a retreat meeting.
Well, we put that date in, this goes back to the March 5th meeting where we asked Mr. DeAngelo to give us some costs.
Right, right.
Which we haven't received yet. But we'd kind of like to get going and see if that's, you know, possible for him to at least give us those figures. I don't think it's going to be a really lengthy meeting, because then otherwise, we're going to have to wait to get the ball rolling in September again. And in September, we'd like to start the B&amp;G meetings up again.
So has he been invited? Would you like me to invite him?
To the August 16th meeting?
So, well, either one, wherever, whatever meeting. I haven't...
Well, at the B&amp;G meeting, I think we made it pretty clear, but definitely will need to remind him.
So you want, should we invite him to the August 16th so he can put it on his calendar?
I mean, it's going to be a half hour meeting before the retreat, or we can wait till September.
Well, I'm just wondering if we need to make it earlier or something? Because I think we had said we'll do a 4:30 to 5 o'clock quick business meeting, get the tax rule... we had said we'll do a 4:30 to 5 o'clock quick business meeting, get the tax rolls, tax rate going, and any other personnel issues that we might need to approve over the summer, and then move into our retreat. So if it's going to be kind of something more than that, where we're having like a discussion about B&amp;G, then it just, we might need to fudge with the dates or the time or be willing to start our retreat later.
I took the day off.
Or start the meeting earlier. You know what I mean? We just, and maybe it's just being flexible if John confirms.
Sure. I don't know, would 4 o'clock?
I can do that with enough, certainly with this much notice. But the question is, like, would he have to come and do a presentation, or is the issue more, like, that's what I guess I didn't understand.
I think he would do the presentation that we asked him to do at the March 5th meeting.
Okay. So that's kind of a thing.
Right.
It's a whole thing. We're going to have a conversation. It's a back and forth. It's not like a quick.
So I just have to say, I've been in touch with Winter Hill, and we can't get in before 4 o'clock.
Okay.
So, and then if we're going to have a videographer, then that puts a restriction on our time and setup and everything, too.
So could we start 4 o'clock here and then head to Winter Hill?
Well, you can get in at 4 o'clock at Winter Hill, right?
Yeah, they, the way it was left with me is certainly no earlier than 4.
How late can we stay? Is there a time limit for how late do they say?
I didn't ask that question.
I don't remember there being, but we can ask the question.
Yeah.
Because if we can't get, what Julia is saying is that the videographer needs to set up, and so if we start, we could still start at 4:30, but maybe we just need to stay flexible that our retreat aspect might not start to like 5:30. You know, we might just push it. Yeah. Which is fine with me.
Do you video from Winter Hill?
It's public meeting.
Especially that meeting? That's why I'm starting to think, should we try and move 4 to 5 here?
Yeah, we could.
And then just head over? I think it makes Celia's life easier as well.
Yes. Well, and I took the day off, so you don't have to worry about me running in at 4:02.
Okay.
I can do it.
Okay.
But it works.
Yeah, John.
John.
Can you do that for? Love.
Okay. All right. So let's plan on 4 o'clock here, and then we'll move on to our retreat part at Winter Hill.
Okay. Thanks.
And do you want John DeAngelo here?
Yes, certainly.
Okay. So 4 o'clock, remind me of the date again?
August 16th.
August 16th.
Okay. Do you have that? Yes.
I knew you'd like that. Okay. If we are, we can move into a different, yeah, the library. Okay. Moving on to consent agenda financial. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to consent agenda personnel. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unfinished business is the approval of the sports merger agreements for 2018-19, which we tabled at the last meeting, and we have now heard from Mr. Solomon. At this point, I'm ready to approve. I don't know if anybody has any objections at this point?
Do you want me to read the recommended action? Okay, so the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the sports merger agreements between the Haldane Central School District and the school districts listed herein for 2018-19, and authorizes the board president, superintendent, high school principal, and athletic director to sign these agreements on behalf of the district. This includes modified baseball, football, volleyball, softball, girls, and boys soccer with the Garrison Union Free School District, varsity wrestling, and indoor track, varsity and JV, with the Putnam Valley School District, varsity ice hockey with Lakeland, Walter Panis, Hendrick Hudson, and Putnam Valley School Districts.
I have a motion.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any communication from the public at this point? Moving on to new business, CSC, CPSC recommendations.
Okay. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the recommendations by the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as submitted below.
I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The designation and location of our annual board reorg meeting to be held Monday, July 2nd. Ann just brought up a good point two minutes ago. I guess we would have to make sure that this room is not being worked on.
Yep.
But July, will plan on being in this room, and then we'll head over to Winter Hill.
This is for the reorganization.
Oh, sorry. The reorg.
So I said I can see the music room.
Music room.
Yeah, I can add that to the recommended action if you want to.
How come I, how come the recommended action isn't showing up? That's what I'm.
I don't know. I see it on my printed copy.
You do?
The recommended action is that the Board of Education designates Monday, July 2nd, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the band room as their annual reorganization meeting and location.
Okay. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item three, location of board workshop meetings in 2018 to 19. And here we have it as a discussion. This year, we tried something different. I don't know what you all thought about having them in the library. Some evenings were kind of cramped. It was nice to be in different space, but I'm not sure it's so conducive to artwork. Anybody want to share their opinions?
I liked it.
You did?
I actually like it better out there.
And maybe, though, during budget season, we should do them down here. I think it was that timeframe was a little bit challenging, because there were more attendance. The projector isn't as, I don't know, just doesn't seem as big or something. Maybe we should think about even workshop meetings being down here during budget season. It just might be a little easier. I don't know. But I liked the.
I know what Celia's going to say.
Well, upstairs was nice. The screen was really nice to be there. It was a little small, but you gotta remember, the AC in there was horrible. It did the sound.
Yeah. Well, here, there's no AC, so.
But it is a thing.
I don't think we got the benefit that we were looking for, though.
Right.
That's what I wanted to say.
Right. You know? Being tight, so.
The small group work around the table type.
Yeah, so I don't know if that really got that.
We still, we just keep striving to figure that out. I didn't know why that's so hard.
Yeah, I know.
Right. Well, because we did a lot of things to try and make business meetings, business meetings, and workshop meetings, workshop meetings. But it is true that those meetings still, I mean, they're set up the same way. Right. It's fuzzy. If you get a horseshoe table.
Horseshoe table. There you go.
Ann.
I don't, I don't know. I don't know, I, the space is fine, but I don't know, it's exactly what Evan said. It's not the benefit that we were going for.
And honestly, I think it's easier for the public to access this room than it is that room. We've had, especially with some of the changes that we may be making with security, and sometimes the doors weren't open, and I think it's just more confusion than anything.
Because I think.
I did like the space. I mean, it's not that.
Yeah.
Maybe it's something that we have to think about a little more.
We can keep talking about it. It might be a good, like, retreat item. I feel like it's been a retreat item every retreat.
Every year.
So we can come up with a different possible solution this coming year and try something new if we want to.
Maybe brightly colored folding chairs.
I was thinking, just roll in one of the cafeteria tables. Octagon seating.
Yeah. Well, it's always that dichotomy of like us wanting to be able to talk to each other, but then we invite people to come to the meeting, so we have our back to them. Plus, we have our back to the cameras.
Cameras. Right.
But if anybody's watched any of the municipal access board meetings, there's.
And they do.
There are plenty of boards that meet with their back to the cameras, and nobody seems to care. They're just there to talk as a board.
The one time, the one meeting we did that, where we had like a real working, was when we met in room 220 with the Buildings and Grounds Committee. Actually, no, it wasn't.
211.
Yeah, in 211. That's what it was, 211. You know, and that was a meeting where we invited members of the Buildings and Grounds Committee. I mean, but the, so to me, it was less about the space. I mean, yes, we invited these people, and we did have more of a round table, but it was less about the space, and it's more about the process. And so I think.
Right. Because we did the same thing in this space when we were talking about the Hall of Fame, and we invited, we had their chairs set up here, and it was really like this intimate thing, where we all just asked each other questions.
I think, I think it's, I think it's more about process than about, than about the space. And, I mean, the only other thing to do, not that I think that this is actually a great idea, would be on the workshop meetings to have it be, you know, but we want the student, if there's a student rep, you know, we want everybody there. You know, the other, I mean, at this point, we are kind of distant, you know, but, but I don't, I don't know. I think it's more about process. It's more about how this process is structured than the space.
I agree. I think we continue to talk about how we want workshops to be just that, a workshop. And we did try this year to move most of the business items to the business meetings, but it's not always possible. But maybe we can try again next year, and maybe we'll succeed.
Well, and maybe that there's some.
I mean, I think when we'd come up with our workshop topics with Dr. Benanti this summer and in the fall, there may be some topics that do really lend themselves to that, to that process, right? Like, so imagine if Daniel Pack McCarthy had come today, it actually would have been really counterproductive to have her stand up there, because then she's in a position where she's giving a presentation, right? I think we need to really think about who the.
Having a conversation.
And it may not be every meeting.
Right. Agreed.
I think, too, and this might be a Celia-ish, you know, conversation, but I think one of the things, having this microphone up here, and that people have to like walk down to like come mention something, to walk back, creates a real formality. And I think it prevents people from wanting to get up and talk. Whereas like if we're in a meeting, like a committee meeting, people, you know, raise their hands, somebody calls on them, they talk. It's a little bit more.
Yeah, but you want your.
Right. Well, what I'm wondering is if there's a solution, you know, mics placed midway or in the middle even would be better, or.
Is there wireless? Do you have a wireless?
Wireless, you know, are there ways to make it easier for people just to raise their hand and chat, instead of having to like have this whole thing?
Well, the district has wireless.
But I don't know if you ever used the district's equipment.
Be nice if you put in the budget. I'll just add that with the horseshoe.
Yeah, but that.
Well, actually, not to, not to, not to just the horseshoe table idea. I mean, it's something that Peter Henderson actually, Peter's the one that actually got us to this, this setup, which is at least a setup where we can look at each other more, which was, you know, which was.
Right, because we used to be going like that.
Which was an improvement that didn't involve additional funds, but.
You always push those two tables in. You want to hear them close. Share table back.
Like, get rid of this table.
Yeah.
We could.
Well, I would.
Or make it smaller.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I see. I see what Celia, there's not room, though, because of the, anyway, we can talk about it.
But are we in agreement that perhaps this is the better space to be for all the meetings, or do we want to continue to try?
I think it's, well, for one reason, I think, that, I hadn't thought about the added security, but a lot of folks that are new to board meetings, they don't know the difference between a business meeting and a workshop meeting. Like, if we want people to come, I think they should be in the same place and easy to get into.
Agreed.
But it was a well-intentioned effort.
Yes, it was. We tried.
Continuous improvement. We will continue to strive.
Agreed.
So it sounds like we're going back to the, the music room being the.
The go-to.
The baseline meeting location, in case there's a special something. Right.
I think that's best. We'll keep it all, and we can figure out different ways of working with the space here, maybe.
Sounds good.
Excellent. Okay. But that said, any questions, comments from the public? No? Tanian, I know you're dying to give some input on this setup. No. Okay. All righty. Well, it looks like Dr. Bauer's final board meeting will be coming to an end. Again, thank you for your years of service, and we wish you the best.
And thank you for all the support that you've given me.
Thank you.
It's been very much appreciated.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Evan.
Oh, and, sorry, Evan.
I'll make the motion, my final motion to adjourn.
Thank you, and thanks, Evan.
Thank you.
Well, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Wow.